The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from May 9th, 2023.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And all those abstained say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to proclamations, we do have one proclamation tonight. I'll actually defer to Counselor Perry for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we had a proclamation made for Father William Devine, who's celebrating his 50th anniversary for being a priest. And they had a nice celebration at St. Thomas Aquinas over the weekend. So I had the privilege of presenting him with this, and he was very happy to receive it. So I would like to read the proclamation to put it in the record. "To Chaplain Father William Devine, U.S. Navy Retired Proclamation. Whereas Father William Devine was raised in Bridgewater, Mass., the son of Charles and Maisy Devine; and whereas Father Devine graduated from Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School, St. Francis Xavier University, St. John Seminary, and was ordained as a priest on May 19th, 1973; and whereas Father Devine served as a parish priest in the Archdiocese of Boston for 16 years before joining the U.S. Navy Chaplain Corps in 1989; and whereas tenure in the U.S. Navy Lieutenant Devine held many roles: Battalion Chaplain at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, Chaplain on the USS WASP, Chaplain at the U.S. Naval Academy, Chaplain on the USS Blue Ridge, Chaplain for the 3rd Marine Expeditionary Force," just to name a few. "And whereas in 2009, Captain Chaplain Devine led a task force of chaplains to Bangladesh and helped in creating a Bangladesh Chaplain Corps, which worked with Muslim clerks and senior military personnel. And whereas in July of 2010, Chaplain Devine retired from the Chaplain Corps and returned to the Archdiocese of Boston; and whereas in June of 2011, Father Devine was appointed as pastor of the St. Thomas Aquinas Parish in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, has hereby proclaimed May 21st, 2023, his Father William Devine Day in the town of Bridgewater in honor of his dedication and 50th organization anniversary." And we presented that to him, like I said, over the weekend. He was very happy to receive it.
Great. Congratulations to Father Devine.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Item D, citizen open forum. We welcome public feedback and participation. We do not currently have anyone from the public, but if someone from the public would like to speak, we'd encourage them to come to the podium now. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item E, appointments. We have none. Moving on to Item F, public hearings. We have three hearings tonight. We'll start the first one. The time is 7:05, and I'm officially opening the hearing for Order O, FY24006, CPA Reserve Accounts, FY2024. This hearing has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website and is being voted this evening. The budget and finance meeting on 5/23, prior to the town council meeting, had a recommendation.
We recommend 2 to 0 to approve this.
Thank you. And FinCom meeting on 5/22/23. I don't know that we have results from that. I'll defer to the town manager for an overview of this.
Absolutely, Mr. President. This is essentially the annual budget appropriation for the Community Preservation Committee. And as in past years, it is a fairly standard budget. The law requires that we estimate revenues. We've estimated those revenues fairly conservatively at $1 million this year. The law also requires that each of the three so-called buckets, one bucket being community housing, one bucket being historic preservation, and one bucket being open space preservation. But then the law requires that each one of those buckets be allocated at least 10% of the projected revenues. So we have done that. Each of those buckets gets $100,000. In addition, the budget, or the law requires, or allows, I should say, up to 5% of the revenues to be allocated to administrative expenses. We have done that. And then finally, the community preservation does have two outstanding bond obligations. One is for the Keith Homestead, which was purchased in 2012 for a little over $50,000. And the other is for the academy building renovations, which amount to about $335,000. So absent those, everything else goes into, all the remaining revenues go into essentially budgeted reserves and are available for appropriation and recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Are there any questions from the town councillors? No questions from the town councillors. So the time is 7:08, and I'm officially closing the hearing. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstained say aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next hearing, the time is 7:09, and I'm officially opening the hearing for Order O, FY24007, Supplemental Appropriation, FY2024. Hearing has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website and may be voted this evening. The budget and finance meeting prior to this meeting voted.
We recommend 2 to 0 to approve.
And FinCom voted 5 to 0 to recommend. I'll defer to the town manager for an update.
Mr. President, this is very simply the result of the debt exclusion vote that occurred in April. And this adds the debt associated with the Bristol, the new Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School to our annual budget and to the tune of $309,910.50.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? All right, are there any questions from the town councillors? All right, seeing none. The time is 7:10. I'm officially closing the hearing, and I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstained say aye. Motion passes unanimously. The time is 7:10, and I'm officially opening the hearing.
Gotta wait till 7:11.
7:11.
It's 7:00. Oh. Thank you.
Tick, 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 tick.
Who said 7:11? Who puts that in there?
It's on, it says we gotta go by.
Pretty good estimate, though.
You got yelled at, I got yelled at, we all got yelled at.
Well, that's a... Now we know. We're almost there. Lift off. All right. The time is 7:11. Thank you. I'm officially opening the hearing for Order 0, FY23056, Capital Plan Transfers. This hearing is duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website and may be fully voted this evening. Budget and finance meeting on 5/23 tonight.
Voted, we voted 2 to 0 to recommend.
Voted to recommend, and FinCom voted 5 to 0 to recommend. I'll defer to the town manager for an overview of this order.
Thank you, Mr. President. The capital, this is the second of two FY23 capital appropriation requests. The first one was to fund vehicles that we lease. And the second one is to fund purchases. And in one case, we've added a new vehicle, which we'll also do a lease purchase on. The total appropriation, for those wondering, from this order would be $1,412,711.33. Most of it coming from capital stabilization. One, closeout of the Capital Senior Center Trust, which has $7,030 and change sitting in it. So those are the sources of funding. The use, that's the most running I've done all day. The uses of funding, I can go through quickly if you like.
Sure.
I did this for the Finance Committee last night, so. Labor costing module, this is a piece of technology, essentially, a software that will allow us to pretty instantly determine where our employee costs are on any given day. It also allows us to project over a long period of time, plugging in different variables very quickly. So this actually saves the, excuse me, the human resources payroll and finance departments quite a lot of time and energy. So it's a one-time expense. Incorporated in that expense is two years of maintenance. And so that is what we're recommending in front of you. We are replacing the public safety workstations to the tune of $30,000. We are replacing the police station, the police department virtual server, one of them, for $30,000. We are implementing several components of Munis and our financial, other financial softwares, and merging them and bridging them, so that is $70,500. We, as I mentioned in the council before, we ran overages on the memorial building, so we're requesting $120,000 for that. Senior Center upgrades, which reflects the closeout of the Senior Center Trust monies, that will go towards finishing the pavilion that Bristol Plymouth students built for us. Did a wonderful job, but we want to finish that job off. We want to finish the pieces that Bristol Plymouth can't handle. Library HVAC requires short-term fix to the tune of $15,000. We know we have a long-term issue at the library and all the utility systems really need attention. So this is nothing more than a short-term, five-year fix for the library. Door access for the library as well, for $15,000. Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2 both need replacement garage heaters. We've already replaced 2 and Fire Station 1, but the third one has gone out, so we have to do that. Concession stairs, that is down at Legion Field. The stairs leading into the concession stand are in really bad shape, so we'll be replacing those. We got a grant from the state to replace, or not replace, but to install a permanent generator at the Senior Center. And this is for the electrical upgrade and also the installation of that new generator. We have three police replacement vehicles. Budget and Finance Committee asked why it was listed as two separate orders for three vehicles. And there's really no reason for that. We, one of them would have been on your order last go-around, but it did not make the cut. So we think that's just the reason that there are two orders. The fire department's requesting utility side-by-side ATV in order to transport patients and more easily access areas that they need to get to with emergency equipment. We need to purchase a trailer for our old and broken-down tech rescue equipment. We also need two trailers to transport the ATV and UTV. We need a replacement for the airboat and trailer. The airboat dates back to the early 90s, as does the trailer. Both are in conditions beyond reasonable cost to repair. The air compressor and tank refill station is, we are required to replace that on a regular basis, and that's to the tune of a little over $11,000. We got a $213,000 grant from the Commonwealth for a new firefighting brush truck. And we are picking up 10% match on that, so that's a $21,000, a little over $21,000 expense. Engineering survey truck for $60,000. That adds to our fleet, but allows us to do a lot more of the surveying required under our engineering department. And that significantly cuts the expense of our engineering work. John Deere loader, this is the one I mentioned earlier. It's payment 1 of 5. It's a lease purchase, which we are in the habit of doing with capital, or vehicles that fall under the capital plan. So that is a $53,000 hit. Our existing loader is well over 22 years old, so in need of replacement. Hot box truck, again, the existing vehicle dates back to, I believe, the late 90s. And is not, can't make it on the road, can't pass inspection. So there's a $91,000 hit for that. Big project that we have been anticipating for a number of years now, town records management and digitization. Phase 1 of that project to the tune of $247,000 and change. That will begin this long-awaited process to purge down and digitize all the town records. One, allow easier storage of the records that we have to keep on paper. And two, allow the public much easier access to all town records that we have. So that process will get underway very shortly. Recreation Department needs a pickup truck for maintenance and upkeep of the parks. We've been relying on a privately-owned vehicle up till now. So that, now that we have created more of a recreation, parks and rec department, we need to make sure that we fund it with appropriate capital. Also, a spreader and sprayer that we use for the fields, both to spread fertilizers and so forth. That's to the tune of about $13,000, a little more. A trap rake, which is a motorized vehicle that can grade and take care of the infills for our nine different recreational fields. And then finally, just a basic, small-scale utility vehicle, also for parks and rec that is used for getting on trails and/or field maintenance all over town. So that's to the tune of about $13,000. So that is very, very quick breakdown of the capital plan or the capital appropriation request, but I'm certainly happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Are there any questions from the councillors? Okay, seeing none. The time is 7:20. I'll officially close the hearing, and I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to Agenda Item G, license transactions. We have two tonight. I will defer to the town manager for Petition P, 2023028, the granting of a one-day entertainment permit.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Portuguese Holy Ghost Society of Bridgewater has petitioned for three one-day entertainment permits. Again, fairly routine, do this every year. And by all accounts, it's a great time for all. But those dates would be June 16th, June 17th, and June 18th. And the approximate attendance, they estimated 200 to 300 folks at their facility on Broad Street.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Petition P, 2023029, change of manager. 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC. I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This fairly routine request for a change of manager at the 99 Restaurant, in this case from Kendra Carley to Brittany Yarid. And these change of manager requests have to come to the council for approval. Just FYI.
Okay, any questions for the town manager? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to Agenda Item H, presentation. We have a presentation on the annual water department report.
Well, we'll see. If I could perhaps take my report out of order while we make sure that Mr. Ettenero is here. I could certainly do that.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to take Item I, town manager's report, out of order and speak to it now.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. Motion passes. We'll take the town manager report, Item I, out of order.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. High Street Closure Update. I just want to remind the councillor, who, council is probably tired of hearing it, but I also want to make sure that folks that are watching know that our timeline for closure of High Street at the Lincoln Athletic Club and where the folks access our roadways department, our Highway Barn, that timeline is still June 15th for a closure. And we are anticipating a reopening once the bridge is replaced of about October 15th. So it'll be about a four-month period of time without being able to access that portion of High Street. So that is in the works. We have the electronic signs going up this week, right down at the site, so that people that drive by there will have some awareness. We also have letters going out to the folks that live on High Street and the streets off of High Street in that location, in that area, as well as folks on Oak Street. So they'll get direct mail notification with links to the website and links to phone numbers to call and get more information. We are still working on a detailed signage plan, but Greg Tansey, our town engineer, has so far come up with a really good signage program, which I think will be quite effective. We also are working on, it's fairly simple detour plan, but making sure that that gets up on our website so that people, once they click on the website, will know right where they will need to go to avoid that area, that High Street closure area. So that's what I have on High Street closure, but happy to answer questions.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none. We can move on to the next item, the Summer 2023 Roadway Project.
Summer 23 Road Projects, and our DPW director is here, so he can correct me when I'm wrong. Hopefully, he doesn't correct me. Right now, I think everybody knows we have been expending some time and effort on Maple, right a couple blocks away here. We've redone the sidewalks. Once all of the other ancillary work is done around this area, you'll see the streets that have been getting sidewalk work and other minor work done, you'll see those all paved. And the final product should be completed, I would say, within the next month or so, month or two. Anyway, that's Maple. Spring Hill will get new walkways, as well as repaving. Park Terrace is a project that was jointly done with Bridgewater State University, and that will get some attention in terms of paving. Church Street and Union Street have both, I believe, been leveled, and they'll get a final paving in conjunction with the other streets. When that time comes, Winter Street, on the west side of Bedford, will get drainage work and essentially get rebuilt. And that will happen later in the summer or early fall. The library driveway has seen a little bit of attention. That'll get a final coat as well when the other streets get paved, when the paving company comes in. Right now, we had planned to do a portion of South Street, and we have taken that off the list because of the drainage needs are greater than we can afford and manage at this point. So that will be deferred, hopefully, to next year, but to a later date. Flag Street is a big issue for us, and specifically the drainage. That will not see any attention this year, and we will be looking to do something there in FY24, depending upon an FY24 vote from the voters in Bridgewater and/or our ability to grant fund a portion of that. So that is in the works, too. And then the Deerfield Neighborhood Surveying and preliminary work has begun. More survey work will continue this summer. That's a far more complex issue than just rebuilding a road or paving. We have to seek proper drainage easements and so forth. So that work will continue over the summer and well over the next year or so. So just as a reminder, we do select streets according to the policy that I believe handed out to the, what now I'll refer to as the Old Council, but I'll forward that policy out again. I believe it's on our website. We go through several layers of analysis. We look at the street scan, what our scanning program has shown us over the years. And once we see that, then we layer it back out with all the other issues and concerns that we have to look at. You know, the condition of drainage, which a street scan does not look at. The, you know, a host of other things that we look at. The amount of traffic that the particular road gets and so forth. So there is quite a lengthy list of analysis that DPW goes through before they identify streets to be included in a particular year's improvement plan. So, but as I say, I'll forward that out to the councillors so that you can see that, because I know you all get questions from constituents about why can't my road be done? And, oh, it's just, it's easy. It's just, you know, a mile and a half of pavement. Well, it's not necessarily quite that easy. It's almost never that easy. But there are a lot of additional factors that go into determining what kind of work we have to do, the type of surveying work we have to do, the type of engineering work we have to do. So some of the work that you see now on Maple is simple. There's no water line replacements necessary. There's no sewer line replacements necessary. There's no drainage replacements necessary on those streets. So those can rise to the top because we can fund those. And we can also commit to doing new sidewalks, which is part of our commitment to the downtown area for a more pedestrian-friendly approach and is part of our complete streets plan. So that's a sort of a quick breakdown of what our plan is this year and, you know, just some sort of notification or explanation about the process that we go through when we actually select. It's not just sort of a coin toss, but that's important for people to know. But happy to answer questions about that.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager?
Mr. President, if I may, if I may, through you to the town manager. I just, you did make reference to Flag Street. I know that we have in recent months referred to several public ways. I know South Street, Vernon Street as well, and Flag Street are among the notable roads that are, receive very heavy traffic flow and are in particularly poor condition beyond simply surface reconditioning, but they need major rehabilitative work to the infrastructure beneath, as we know. I know that in the proposed capital plan that we'll discuss tonight that you have made reference to the anticipated debt exclusion measure that would be proposed for partial payment, together in some cases with ARPA funding. I'm wondering, I know that it kind of pans out into fiscal year '25. And I'm wondering if you can give us your sense as to, on a calendar basis... wondering if you can give us your sense as to, on a calendar basis, you know, when residents might anticipate work to commence.
That's a great question. So the, we have done all the engineering required for Flag Street, and we've done a lot of the engineering required for Cross Street. So there are five major areas that we're very concerned about. Flag, Cross, Vernon, South, and the Deerfield neighborhood. So those are, those are five that really rise to the top and, and so you hit the nail on the head. Those are ones that we can't do with our basic $700,000 a year allocation from, for Chapter 90 from the state. Because those are multimillion-dollar projects that, that, that we'll have to plan funding for. So if, if we get to the point, a little less than a year from now, where that is a question on the ballot and, and voters approve that, Flag Street is ready to go. So, so that one has all the engineering done, all the plans done. So, so we would be able to see progress specifically on Flag Street very quickly, within a month or two of, of a vote like that. The, the others would be, Cross Street would probably be next in line in terms of actual visible improvements, and that would probably come the following year on, on our capital plan. The whole time, Deerfield requires a lot more, a lot more work, survey work, a lot more engineering work than, than physical work. So, and that's, that's physical, the, rather, the engineering work is time-consuming. Fortunately, I think we've got really good, really good engineers that now work for us, that can do the work in-house, and so I think that's, that's one of the exciting things, quite frankly, about being able to, to plow ahead with these projects, is being able to use our resources in-house for most of these projects, not all, but most of these projects. So, so I would, I would say Flag Street, you'd see immediate work on Flag, and then you'd see the following year work on Cross. Then, then depending on the engineering and the process, how, how they layer out after that, I'm not, not quite sure.
Very good, thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the third item in the update, truck exclusions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So truck exclusions, I know every member of the council has gotten calls from constituents that are very frustrated with the amount and, of truck traffic and, and the speed of truck traffic, or at least the perceived speed of truck traffic, and we hear that. We have commissioned, well, let me back up. One of the ways, one of the major ways we can try to control some of the truck traffic and limit the impact to neighborhoods is, is by adopting truck exclusion. We can't do that unilaterally, we have to work with the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation, in order to adopt a, a ban or a limitation on truck traffic on any street in town. And the Department of Transportation lays out criteria that we have to meet in order to, in order to actually implement some sort of ban or restriction. One of the, the threshold, the threshold is looking at the, the number of trucks or the, the percentage of truck traffic over two and a half tons on a particular road. So we did High Street, we asked a, a traffic count firm to come in and do a traffic count for us, and we got the results back a little while back, and that does not, even though there is, there's perceived to be a lot of truck traffic on High Street, right now, that doesn't meet the threshold for a DOT restriction. I'm going to ask that we do that again. We are going to plan on doing that again next month or early, early July, to see if we can see any changes in truck patterns or traffic patterns, and to see if the, the threshold is higher than, than the three. Right now, it's at three point, in one direction, it's 3.5%, in another direction, it's 3.3% or so. So it's, it's not, it doesn't come close to the 8% that, that DOT requires for, for us to be able to request a truck limitation or truck exclusion. So we are going to do that, we're going to do another traffic analysis, and we'll probably do it in more than one place, not just High Street. But we do know, based on the, the complaints that I get, we know that there are people, neighborhoods with concern, specifically High Street, Walnut, Auburn, Maple, South, Vernon, whole, whole host of streets where, where people are tired of, of big trucks coming. And one of the reasons, I think everybody knows, one of the reasons that, that a lot of these neighborhoods are seeing increased truck traffic is, is GPS, the, the widespread use of GPS. And GPS will show trucks that, you know, you can, instead of going into the middle of town and having to come out, you know, you can just cut across Maple, for instance. It doesn't, GPS doesn't tell an 18-wheeler that, you know, it can't make the turn off of Maple onto, onto South Street or onto Bedford or whichever street. So, so that, that's why a lot of these trucks are finding alternative routes, is just the widespread use of GPS, obviously. But I think given, given the wide variety and the, and the location of the complaints that we've gotten and that you've gotten, I think our approach has to be a little more comprehensive than just looking at specific streets, you know, High Street in, in this particular case. But I think, I think looking at how truck traffic comes into town, where it's originating from, where its destination is, is going to give us a much better view of how we might be able to contain and, and restrict trucks, even if we don't meet that 8% threshold. So, so our next steps really, number one, engage more deeply with Mast Dot to see exactly what our options are. If we do meet the 8% or we don't meet the 8%, we want to find out all of the options available to us. And do a more town-wide traffic assessment, both during the summer and then probably in the fall, just to see how much of a difference there is between those, those two times a year. We also have the ability to adopt, adopt a lot of traffic calming measures. I know we've talked a little bit, or you've had residents reach out to you and request speed tables. Speed tables are an option, are a traffic calming measure. They're not probably the, the best answer for us right now, but they may be after we do an analysis, they may be a good, a good answer for us at some point. But, but I do think looking at adopting a whole host of traffic calming measures would help us develop a more town-wide approach to, to truck traffic and traffic generally. Based on all of that, then I think we need to, to do a comprehensive traffic management plan, which shows the whole town, shows where we see the, the worst impacts of trucks, or where we see the worst impacts of traffic generally, and then, and then work off of that to, to come up with better, better solutions. And then whatever we do in that regard, we're going to have to reengage Mast DOT, because Mast DOT is going to have to approve whatever plan we come up with. And so we will engage with them quite heavily and lobby quite hard to try to overcome that threshold of 8% and, and convince them that we can, we can manage this, even if we don't have 8% truck traffic on any given, given street or at any given time, that we need to, that we need to improve. And then obviously after that, we, we'd have to implement the plan. So, so it's a multi-step process and, you know, we do get calls, I know, you know, we get calls every so often about, well, can't you just put up a sign? You know, just can't you just put up a sign that says no trucks? We can't do that. We've done that incorrectly, my understanding is, in the past, and, but, but Mast DOT, because they fund to the tune of about seven, well, the Mast DOT money is in every road in our town. So, so that's essentially the hook. If the town never used our Chapter 90 money, we never used Mast, Mast DOT money at all, then, then we could dictate our own rules to some extent. But the hook that, that Mast Dot has is, is they fund improvements for our roads over the course of, of many, many, many years. So, so that's sort of where we are right now. As I say, we'll reengage our traffic count firm to do another count, probably end of June, early July. And then based on that, the results of that will decide whether we want to do another one in the fall after, after classes start and people are all sort of back in town. So that's, that's where we are at this point, but I'm sure people have questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the town manager? Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Throw you to the town manager. So I, I intimately understand that the traffic numbers have to be there in order for the DOT to, to take consideration in regards to restrictions. I will specifically talk about High Street in regards to, I, I would really like the DOT to explain, if they were to deny it, the bridge that we have on High Street by the water treatment plant, I would, I would gladly invite them to try to cross that in their truck while a semi is coming in the opposite direction and not feel the need to pull over. You know, I, I've seen roads where there isn't a lot of traffic, yet there's weight restrictions because of that particular issue. So if we can't ban trucks, I think, and I'd like to hear the DOT say why, we couldn't look at a weight restriction for a public safety hazard. And if anyone has any doubt about that bridge, go right over it a couple of times, hopefully you won't need new struts or tires. And I've also gotten some feedback, you know, in regards to the potential impact to area businesses. I, I don't see that as an impact whatsoever. There are other ways to get there, we are not restricting them from making it to or fro. And I really think we need to be proactive, at, at least on High Street, I know there are others as well, in regards to the bridge, because we're already dealing with a bridge that's out, and I don't really think we want to deal with another bridge that's out as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor George. Any other questions?
Yeah. Counselor Chase? Thank you, and throw you to the town manager. I, I think, Mr. Dutton, that one tactic, if you will, I think that we've employed in the past, is something you had suggested a couple of years ago. A lot of the more annoying truck traffic from the perspective of, of residents is, you know, the kind of endless procession of bulk haulers, you know, large trucks that are hauling gravel, stone, you know, et cetera, particularly in connection with a new subdivision development, for example. Because in that case, typically it'll, you know, begin at seven in the morning, it'll go until three, four, five in the afternoon, and it's, and it's almost literally a matter of, once that truck, you know, empties its load and returns to its, you know, supply point, fills up again, it's back on the road again, and it may not be, and probably wouldn't be, the only truck making that route for that purpose. So that kind of, you know, you know, episodic situation of heavy trucking on a road that doesn't normally otherwise have heavy trucking is particularly unsettling, I think, to residents. And I think, Mr. Dutton, one suggestion I think that you've employed in the past that seemed to me to have benefit was to reach out to the particular trucking companies that might be utilized by a developer at a particular site, something that's actually easily knowable, we can learn that, and, you know, suggesting to them potential alternate routes, things of that sort. I, I thought it worked well at, at one point a couple of years ago along the Flag Street, Auburn Street route, and it might be something worth employing once again on occasion. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Do we have any other questions?
Maybe just a, a quick add-on for me. I think, I agree with both of the, the points that we've heard. I think on some of these roads, the, the issue isn't even just the truck traffic. In some cases, the roads seem too small to support a large truck. And I know in the, the concerns that I've heard over in the Vernon Street area, South Street, Cross Street to some extent, Winter as well, there, those are also heavily used for walking dogs and sort of jogging and these sorts of things, and many of those sites don't have sidewalks. So what ends up happening is you have a car, a large truck, and kids on bikes, people walking dogs, sort of sharing the same, I don't know what it is, 12-foot width or whatever it is. So I, I think if, if, as part of the traffic study, we can also look at what those, those roads are used for and just make sure that the safety aspect of that is addressed, that would, that would be appreciated.
No, that's a great point.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we will go back to presentations. We have one presentation tonight, it's the annual water department report. Maybe I'll defer to the town counselor to introduce it, or, sorry, the, the town manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think you all know Azu Ettenero, he's our DPW director, and he is, has graciously volunteered to give you a little presentation, which I will try to share on the screen prior to his.
Is this visible on the Facebook broadcast as well?
Yes, it is. Yep, yep. All right, we're ready.
Great, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I think, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I don't think I have spoken before the council before, but one of the things that we are responsible for is the water supply. And listening to Mr. Dutton speak about the roads, it, I was kind of getting paranoid, I may be out of work, because he did such a great job presenting what we do in the DPW. But one of the things that we do is the water. As you know, there's been very many complaints and, by people worrying about what's happening with the water, the quality, the discoloration, but I'm here to report to you that most of that will be quite behind us in a very short order, come, by the time October rolls around. What happened last year, we had a state-declared drought, which really affected our, the water supply, and so we, normal routine flushing that we do to clean out the sediments that would have collected in some of the old streets, down in the East Street area, Plummer Street area, some off of Green Street, where you have a lot of dead ends, that water accumulates, and once you, if you don't flush it, it builds up. And Bridgewater has very high manganese and iron content. And so the new power plant, the new water treatment plant that we have on High Street has just come online, and we have seen quite a big difference. And the water levels have come back up, the drought advisory from the DEP has sort of been mitigated, and so that, but we don't want to be too excited, where we are allowing people to, you know, do a lot of lawn watering, conservation is very important. So we have a, a slide sort of put together for you, and then I will speak along with the, the slide presentation. But the town of Bridgewater pumps, on the average, about 1.5 million gallons to 1.6 million gallons a day withdrawal, and we have permitted for about 100, 1.84 million gallons per day. So what we have here is a video, Mr. Dutton, if you, thank you, that's a good one. So you have a little presentation here, about a minute and probably 20 seconds, that speaks about where water comes from. In Bridgewater, we have the Fountain River Aquifers that we pump from. We have several wells that we pump from, we have two water treatment plants, one of Cavers Pond, and the new one now that we have on High Street. So if we can play that, Mr. Dutton, that'd be great. So if we can play that, Mr. Dutton, that would be great.
We use water every day, from brushing our teeth in the morning to doing the dishes at night. We turn on the faucet and know the water will flow. But do you know how the water gets to you? Here in Bridgewater, we use more than 580 million gallons of water a year. That's enough to fill two Fenway parks. Each person will use about 45 gallons per day. Keeping the system working is a 24-hour job 365 days a year. We pump our water from three underground aquifers in the Taunton River basin using nine wells. Those wells are located at facilities at High Street, Carver Pond, and Plymouth Street. Treatment chemicals are added as the water is pumped at all locations. At the High Street and Carver's Pond treatment plants, the water is also put through a filtration system. After the water is treated, it enters the system. The water system includes 130 miles of pipes, as well as two water tanks, to make sure there is consistent pressure. That consistent pressure is what ensures you get water when you turn on your faucet. Next up, we'll take a closer look at wells.
So basically, if I can never just add too quickly here, so basically, we have the wells, and then we have the pump system, we draw water from the wells, and we send the water directly to the plants. And then each plant has media filter that filters out the manganese, the ions, and then we add chemicals to make sure that the bacteria levels, the in situ bacterial levels in the water is taken care of, so that we don't all get sick. And then we, from that treatment, then we goes into the distribution. Both plants are now on, and most of the wells are on except for wells 10A and 10B that are offline for maintenance, and as well as well 4A, which is being serviced this week. So the wells, the treatment plants send the water into the distribution, which is basically the lines that go through the streets, and at the same time fill up the water towers. One is Great Hill, right off of High Street, and the other one is by, at the college on Great Hill Road. And the water levels are now very high. So when the pumps are down, basically because of the height of the water, it creates enough pressure to provide the distribution. And as they go lower, there are sensors at the plant that signals that we, that the pumps need to kick on. And we have very able staff, the water superintendent, who's Mr. Kaz Luskas, the water operator, Caleb, and the assistant water operator, as well as the distribution guys, that will work literally 24/7. We are connected with the fire department and the police department, so we do get 911 alert, as soon as there's a break. We have a large system that lets us know we're having a loss of water, and we go out and take care of it midnight, 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. So we do, even though we don't have, we basically have 50% capacity of staffing, and we have a very dedicated staff that actually provide those responsive activities. Because, as you know, just like we have public safety with police and fire, the DPW through the water department is actually very concerned, and we take seriously the quality of the water that we have, because it directly affects people's lives. So sometimes with even the discolorations that we have, that's not bad, it's just I'm not very good with it for the eyes, but that will all be dissipated pretty soon, by October. We did receive three or four emails from some of the town residents. Yeah, some, a lot of people complained, and we provide responses. Well, we have a couple of emails, one from a lady down in the East Street area that said this week she saw her water quality better than she's seen in 30 years. So sometimes just that one little tells you that, oh, well, there is hope. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay, so that's basically says here that in the last 10 years, Bridgewater has been working, and the town has begun, began back in 2020, construction of the new water treatment plant, and that actually came online this last month here. So we have actually a master plan for, Mr. Dutton alluded to it during his presentation about the capital projects that our counselor, Chase, has raised a question about in terms of Flag Street, South Street, Vernon Street. So both of the things that we've done is look at the network of water lines. One of the important things that we want to be doing is replacing some of the old pipes back in, in the 30s and 40s, especially cement pipes were very common, and that's what everybody used. And, but we found that those are not, that's AC pipes, undisturbed, it's not a problem, but once you start having those areas where people want to build a subdivision or build a new house, and they want to tie into that line, it's an AC pipe, oh, we have a concern. So those are the areas, the things that we have been looking at. Part of the capital projects that we have articulated for Mr. Dutton is to look at those areas, so that we can start placing, we did that on Curve Street, we replaced the AC cement pipe on Curve Street a couple of years ago. And so those are the things, but those require a lot of money to do, so. But we are looking at improving those, and we are increasing our flushing program. Now, this last week, there was a peak, our concern because of the, usually we do the flushing at night during times of low demand. However, we are engaged with our consultants, environmental partners, and we did, what we, we engaged them to do what's called hydraulic modeling, to see what improvement we can do to our network, including the possibility of activating the two wells on Vernon Street. So once that is completed, we will have a better idea which way to move with that, with the, these townwide improvements. Next one. Okay, so this is basically a picture, an image to show you what we do with the flushing. Again, last year, because of the drought, we didn't do a lot of that, and that's why you have a lot of those sediments. And the water treatment plant wasn't online just yet. We've also started on Carver's Pond Treatment Plant, we have a lot of the media filters that have not been replaced in more than five, six years, and those are going to be replaced, so that that will help with the discoloration problem. So that's what we do to clean out the sediments, especially the dead end water means. And so it says here that residents may notice temporary discolored water during the flushing process. This is a natural and temporary occurrence. Yes, it does, it doesn't look very slightly, but I can assure you, those are not, those do not pose health hazard. But the, again, you can see why we spent over $80 million on our treatment plant on High Street to take care of some of those with the media filters. So that's what we do. So basically, ensuring a long-term clarity, what is flushed from tower out to prevent sediment settling, the systematic plan is progressing exactly as intended. And by October, as I alluded earlier, I alluded to earlier, by October, all residents should have consistently clear water. And that's what we're driving for. If that doesn't happen, I might have an early retirement. Next. Okay, so this is an aerial view of the new treatment plant. I don't have the fancy laser to point out, but looking at the aerial, over to the corner of the, yeah, right there is the new plant. And then to, so, to, let's assume that that is north, for discussion purposes, not to the south, which, right there is the two lagoons. At the Carver's Pond Treatment Plant, we, we do backwash, so those, the filters, right, filter out the sediment, and then those get backwashed with the chemicals that go into the sewer, sewer lines, and then they get, again, secondary treatment at the plant. Well, and this new one here, what it does is saves us a ton of money that we don't have to, right? Because when you go to the treatment plant through your wastewater, because that is treated as wastewater, that increases your treatment cost. So what we have here is the two lagoons that allows us to, put the, put the backwash water into those lagoons, and then as they get filtered, actually leaching to, we drain out the water, and then the sediment are taken out and hauled out to an approved landfill. So that actually saves a ton of money over trying to put a lot of that backwash water into your sewer system that the answer of getting treated, right? Because the treatment is based on volumes. And so we want to, at any possible juncture, we want to reduce the amount of treatment that we have to do, because we have a discharge limit by the DEP and EPA. So this allows us to cut back at least our own contribution. Next one. Okay, so basically, you have, this is the, what you see standing, that's the cylindrical, what we call the green sand filter. That's, that is where, when the water comes in, it goes right into that, and then it gets processed, and then we add chemicals, and then as it comes out, we add additional chemicals before it goes into the distribution system. And we constantly, we have a part of a lab at the plant that will check the quality of the water. But obviously, as part of the requirements tool from the DEP, we have an independent lab that also takes samples. Next. Then this is basically the pump system that does the pumping. The new, the new plant has at capacity 1,000 gallons a minute, so it pumps out a lot of So what is this, we thank the town people for their patience, it's, you know, it's, I, I look at it this way. Actually, I'm the one that do the cooking in my house. My wife says to me, you like to eat, so you do the cooking. But when you're setting up to make a meal, right, everything looks chaotic. You have the onions chopped up here, you have the pepper chopped up here, you have all the other ingredients, and the kids are going, I'm hungry, Mom, I'm hungry there. But once you pull all those together, it comes out to be a very nice meal, and they love it. And that's basically the same thing what we're doing. All the growing pains, trying to get a treatment plan that works, to get a water that the town people can be proud of, that's what it's basically saying, when it's painful, like surgery. It's not easy to have surgery done, but once it is done, the ailment is gone. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish. And thank you. And I figured I did such a great presentation, I'm sorry, I don't have any answer for any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, that was incredibly informative, and I think, you know, water is obviously an important topic in town, it comes up frequently, and the more information I think we can share with our folk community, because this is a community resource, you know, I think the more informed the conversations could be. So really, really appreciate the time you put into this. With that, I'll open it up to any questions from the council. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Azu. When it comes to Vernon Street, do we have water wells there right now, offline, or do we not?
Oh, yes, sir. We do have two wells there. These are approved wells. So part of the hydraulic modeling that is being done is an evaluation of whether it will make better sense to activate those wells, and we'll pump them to either High Street or Carver's for treatment before it goes into the distribution, or to have a plant right there at Vernon Street, right? Because you might look at a plant and say, whoa, that's expensive. But then the cost of piping from Vernon to either High Street or Carver's Pond with all the road reconstruction that will be involved. If you look at Flag Street alone, we had a tune of $7 million in terms of overall construction cost. So it might make sense, but you know, after we get the hydraulic modeling...
It's a higher elevation in town, too, so that should probably help with some pressure problems, too, right?
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah. But there are two wells there, and those are approved.
Right. Thank you, Azu.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay, maybe just one, maybe two quick questions from me. You mentioned that you get, you do get reports from residents when they're, when a resident kind of turns on the tap and sees brown water. Just out of curiosity, about how many of those do you get in a month? Is it two or three? Is it 100? Is it 1,000?
No, actually, I do have one here. This is the highest that we've had, because of the, I mentioned earlier that we flushed, or rather did a hydrant pressure test, okay? So that requires opening the hydrants. So that's not really the usual flushing that you do at night, that's more, that's more directed towards quality control. What we did during the day is what was necessary to see what kind of pressure that we have at those hydrants, that will allow us to calculate the inline pressure through the distribution. So that agitated, if you will, a lot of the lines. So that was the most calls, but we got, we got about, we had about 31 calls.
31.
And, and those were responded to the same day.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
And so maybe if you exclude the calls that you can directly trace to, to maintenance activity that you're doing, and, you know, maybe just give me a sense of how many calls do you get outside of one of those maintenance cycles in a typical month?
Well, the typical month, it'd probably be about, I would say about 30 still, yeah, in a month. This one here that I just gave you was in one day. Because of that, you know, people wondering what was going on, and we told them we have to do that, yeah.
Thank you. And you mentioned that our hope, and we can probably track that metric, is towards the end of the year, maybe the fall, we should start to see that number drop as more of the lines kind of get cleared for this, the larger project.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. And then just my last question is, if, if a resident does have questions about water quality, how the water system works, who should they contact?
Oh, they can call either me or the water superintendent. And one of the things my wife always admonished me against is that I like to talk too much. I like to hear myself talk. So, so I wouldn't have any problem. My cell number is available, and Mr. Kaz Luskas, the water superintendent, is very, very, very good. He's, so between both of us, we have well north of 40 years of water experience, so we will, we'll be glad to, and we are responsive to.
Excellent. So I would encourage any residents who are watching this to take Azu up on that offer. I think often, I've noticed people are looking to their neighbors for the latest update or maybe just sort of offering their own opinions. You do have direct access to the person who knows the pipes and the system and the program and is excited and eager to speak with you. So if people do have questions, please reach out directly to the water. There you have it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving, moving on to item K, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Seeing none, moving on to L, legislation for action. The first item we have is Order 0 FY23053, Town Clerk Salary. The Budget and Finance voted 2 to 0 to amend the salary amount in their 52923 meeting. Fincom voted 4 to 1.
FinCom voted 4 to 1 to approve as written at their 42423 meeting. I do not have the information on who sponsored this.
Me.
Would you like to speak to this?
Sure. So during Budget and Finance, we did go over some additional numbers. We did get some additional information on area clerks, similar town sizes, similar responsibilities. So we felt it appropriate to amend the order as stated to bring, bring the position up to a grade 13, step 8, $49.7918 hourly rate with an annual salary of $90,62144. So in the, in the form of a motion, like a motion to amend the order, so that reflects what was voted on in Budget and Finance, which would be at a grade 13, step 8, $49.7918 hourly, annually $90,62144.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second? Seeing none, let's go to a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye.
I'll say abstain.
Okay. We have eight, seven in favor, one abstaining.
Like, make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Since Finance, you know, reviewed what the original order was, should this go back to them for review?
I don't believe it has to, correct? It's a recommendation.
Yeah, I think the general premise is what they look at when they're making their determination at the Finance Committee level. I think the specifics of an increase like this, where it's not a straight, you know, significant increase to an appropriation, but rather some step up or portion, I think is fine to do it the way we've done it.
Thank you. Thank you. So we can stay here and continue with the vote?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion to approve in a second. We can move ahead with a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye.
Aye, abstain.
All right. The motion passes. Seven in favor, one abstaining, zero against. Thank you. Moving on to Order 0 FY23055, Jenkins Pond Dam Removal and Bridge Replacement Grant Acceptance. I'll defer to the town manager for details on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, over the past number of years, we've been working on funding the dam removal and bridge replacement at High Street, as I mentioned earlier. We have secured grant funding, funding numbers for, from the dam seawall grant funding, state big grant of $2 million. The MVP program is $750,000.
$750,000. Department of Fish and Game, Division of Ecological Restoration to the tune of $2,550,000. The Wild and Scenic Taunton River Stewardship Council, who was really one of our first funders to the tune of $40,000. The Nature Conservancy, who was the first funder, to the tune of $60,000. National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to the tune of $2,285,000. The dam owners contributing $10,000, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is contributing $1,550,000, which is, brings us to a grand total of $8,245,000 worth of grant commitments. Our, the actual cost will be somewhere south of that, barring any wildly unexpected occurrences, and should be in the neighborhood of less than $7 million. So we've got, fortunately, plenty of cushion here, but certainly my, my thanks go out to all of those organizations that have funded, some have funded completely and forwarded their grant funding, and some of them are reimbursable grants. But we certainly are appreciative of all the outside funding in order to accomplish what is ultimately about a, all in, is about an $8 million project.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the town manager? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstaining say aye. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Order 0 FY23057, acceptance of donation. Defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Black Hat Brewery is generous enough to raise funds and donate them to, to the greater cause, specifically for the Styles and Heart renovation project. And the amount, which is not referenced in the donation legislation, is $200, so we certainly appreciate their efforts on, on our behalf.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this, where it states, whereas the town of Bridgewater has received a donation, to insert of $200, from Black Hat Brew Works.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to include of $200, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. The motion to amend passes.
Like to make a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you to Black Hat Brew Works for that donation. The next item is Order 0 FY23058, Transfer Order Water Enterprise Fund, Carver's Pond Filtration. At the Budget and Finance meeting prior to the Town Council meeting, they voted...
We vote 2 to 0 to recommend approval.
Great. Thank you, 2 to 0 to recommend approval. I do not have the FinCom vote here.
It was to recommend approval unanimously.
Thank you. Great, thank you. I defer to the town manager to give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, if you recall the presentation and the picture of the High Street filtration system, the big cylindrical tanks, this goes to replace the media inside those tanks at the Carver's Treatment Plant, and long overdue for replacement down there. So $240,000 from Water Retained Earnings Account to fund capital project, Carver's Pond Water Filtration.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager?
Mr. President?
Yes?
You to the town manager. So you had mentioned significant time change. So how many years should we be changing them? And how old is the filter being changed now?
The, we should be changing them probably every five to eight years, and the filtration media that's there now has been in there roughly 20. So it's long overdue.
A little overdue.
That's a surprising number. But happy to hear that we're taking care of it. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item E, Resolution RFY23-007, A Resolution of the Town Council in Support of Downtown Revitalization Initiative. I will defer to Councilor Perry on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we brought this up at our last meeting, a resolution, again, in support of downtown revitalization initiative after our Town Council workshop, and we ran into the record last time, so I won't read it again, but it is up for approval tonight, and I would strongly recommend that it be approved enthusiastically.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Perry? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Any additional discussion? All right, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'm excited about this one. All right, moving on to Item M, Old Business. We have none. Moving on to Item N, New Business. Order 0 FY23-059, The Laying Out and Acceptance of a Private Way at Trinity Circle. I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, as the council often sees, road acceptances. It's the council's job to, to determine whether or not the road should be accepted and under what conditions. So in this case, we have reviewed the submission, and our engineering department and DPW are satisfied that, that the proper work has been done at Trinity Circle, so they are recommending acceptance of Trinity Circle by the council. And so I encourage you to refer to the appropriate boards or committees.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? All right. I show two votes needed for this one. The first is a vote on our intention, and then the second is a vote on the committee referral. So the first, the first one is a vote that affirms the councilor's intention to lay out the way.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. The second is a vote to refer to the planning board for a non-binding recommendation.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. The last item of new business is Order 0 FY23060, Adoption of a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. I will defer to the town manager on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a council, most councilors know, every year we submit a rolling five-year capital plan. This is not a specific appropriation. This is rather our collection of capital items that, that we work throughout the year to, to develop with, with department heads and, and others. It's a presentation of as much of the outstanding capital items that we can find and compiles them in one list, and, which is in front of you. As part of the report, we give the rationale for, for why they are laid out in the specific years they're laid out. We, we again work with the department heads to very carefully plot, plot that out. But the report also answers some frequently asked questions, and then, and then gives you the actual CIP for the next five years. Generally, we're thinking, internally thinking ahead about 10 years, but you see this five-year snippet. Things do change year to year. Priorities will change year to year, and, and projects will move on the list depending on a host of different factors, including funding sources, you know, if things break down suddenly and need replacement and so forth. We're trying to get away from the unexpected items that, that occur, and, and doing some forward planning certainly helps us do that. So what you see is a reflection of the work that's gone on, not only over the past year, but for the past year before that and the year before that, and so on. So it is, it is in front of you for a thorough review and then eventual adoption. But as I mentioned, there's nothing here that's a proposed expenditure. This is simply what we plan. The items that you see in, under FY2023, for the most part, I believe, all of them have been adopted either in your first FY23 appropriation for capital a couple of months ago, or in the one that you just voted this evening. So, so FY23, with the exception of the schools, FY23 has been taken care of. I mention the schools because our practice will be moving forward, separating out the school capital for a variety of reasons, and all good reasons. Separating out the school capital, the school assesses us as part of their budget process, assesses us a certain amount of capital on a yearly basis. We receive that assessment in, usually in March or early April, and, and then we proceed forward with funding the school's operational budget, and then the debt, obviously, is passed on to us. That, those are all routine items. The capital is something that, that we have to plan for with the school department in, in prior months and over the course of years. So we work pretty closely with them to develop this capital plan and incorporate their capital requests into our capital plan. So the schools, we will fund the school's assessment when we get to certify our free cash and allocate it into the capital stabilization fund at the end of our fiscal '23. So, so that is, that, we've worked out that timetable with the district. They're, they're satisfied with that, and I think that'll work very well for the council and the school, school board as well. It gets the school, the capital, the schools, the capital they need, the buildings, improvements that they need to do, done, and it ensures that we will have the funding each year to be able to, to fund the school capital. So, so that, that, a little change that we've made in the, in the timeline, but it seems to make a lot of sense, and we'll incorporate that into the, into the next capital improvement program as well. Another, just a quick note on timing, our objective every year is to try to get this in front of the council in conjunction with the operating budget. We didn't do that this year, but our goal next year is to be able to submit the capital improvement plan, the operating budget as essentially one document, even though you're only voting on the, the operating budget at the time, but as one document so that you can see the connection between our operating expenses and, and the capital improvement program, and, and you can ask questions about making sure that we're staffing appropriately for the new equipment we're, we're purchasing, as an example, and making sure that the operations ties with the capital. So, so that's our, our objective for next, next year. But you do have this, the CIP in front of you, and I encourage a referral to Finance Committee and Budget and Finance as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close citizen comment, move on to Item P, Council Comments. We'll start with Councilor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be very brief, but I wanted to remind everyone that with the Memorial Day holiday up and coming, there will be a, a brief service to be conducted on the Town Common on Memorial Day. I believe the time is 8:00 a.m., and I intend to be present. I certainly hope some of my colleagues here on the council will as well, and it's, it's an event I think that properly notes the dedicated contributions of those veterans who have passed before us here in the town. In addition, just coming up shortly, the, on June 1st, the town will raise the pride flag here in front of the Academy Building at, I believe that is at 3:30 p.m. on June 1st. It's become an annual event, I'm glad to say, in the past several years, and I'm certainly looking forward to attending that. And I thank everyone involved in helping to socialize that event and to make it happen as an annual recurring event. And that is all.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy?
No comments.
Great, thank you. Councilor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple things. Councilor Chase, I think you may have the times wrong, and Mr. Dutton, we do need to get this out as quickly as possible. I believe the Memorial Day parade, the step off will be at 9:45, and the ceremony itself on the Common will be at 10:00 a.m. I know there were times flying around. I think that's where we landed, but if we could get that out to everybody so that the public knows and everyone involved knows, I think that would be a good thing. But I do echo Councilor Chase in regards to, it's supposed to be very nice weather. Hopefully, we see a good turnout. We've seen it in the past, and it is an opportunity to, you know, to, to pay homage to, to people that have given their lives to give us the things that we have today. And that's about it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor George. Councilor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just echo what my previous councils have said, please come on out 10 o'clock on Monday morning to pay your respects to those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. We do this every year. It seems that the attendance dwindles each year, but we hope that we, anyone that's around can come out and listen to the ceremony that we put on every year for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perry?
Thank you. I also just want to remention, based on the proclamation I read at the beginning of the, the meeting here today, a sincere congratulations to Father William Devine on his 50 years of priesthood and his service here to the town of Bridgewater, and I hope he continues for many, many more years. Just to remind people that Fourth of July Committee is continuing their fundraising efforts. You see the sign up on the front of the Academy Building here. They are making efforts, but it sounds like they're a ways away, so please continue to contribute if you can. And again, encourage everyone to come out for Memorial Day celebration, and, but have a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Perry. Councilor McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly want to say to everyone, Happy Memorial Day. Enjoy your weekend, and hopefully we'll see you at the parade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lindy?
Okay, I want to also encourage everybody to come out for Memorial Day. I think dwindling attendance, we need to see more people out there to support people that gave the ultimate sacrifice. Also, just echoing Councilor Perry, the thermometers rising. I've seen the volunteers out there. There were various fundraisers, and if we want Fourth of July to happen, we all got to be supportive of that effort. So I'm looking forward to it. I don't have to work this year someplace else, and I'm going to be right there with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll close this out, echoing what others have said. There's three significant community celebrations in recognition. There's Memorial Day, we have Juneteenth and Fourth of July, and all three of those take a lot of people behind the scenes volunteering their time to coordinate, raise funds, communicate to the community. So I really do want to thank everyone involved with putting those on and truly encourage everyone to participate, and if you can, donate to both the Juneteenth and the July Fourth celebration. The last thing, just a note for the councilors, committee assignments will remain as is through this week, so if there is a meeting this week, please attend it as is, and over the weekend, we'll communicate new assignments. If you have something scheduled already for next week and you have a question about it, just reach out to me directly, and we can, we can coordinate that. I think that's it. So with that, we do have executive session tonight under Master of Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to adjourn from executive session. I would accept a motion to move to executive session under those terms.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, this has to be a roll call vote. Josh, I'd ask you to conduct a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
I think I still, Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion was approved.
Great. Motion is approved. We'll move into.